Good evening. City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2022. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Metropolis?
Here.
Mr. Kleinman?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Present.
We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, just as all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with the work session. First item on the agenda is the preliminary lot split and consolidation, 9879 Shepherd Road. The applicant, please come forward, name and address.
I do not see the applicant here.
Then table the item, and if they come, we'll put them back in the agenda and speak about that at that time. Second item is site plan review for the building addition, 8027B Darrell Road, Summit Sound and Security. Name and address and an overview of what you're for here for this evening, please.
I am having control with CPK representing Summit Sound and Security, and we're looking at a new addition on the existing building.
Nothing else to share with your application or what you want?
So, I think there's pretty much two questions involved with the application as it stands, one being the building height, which wasn't specifically called out on the drawings, and one being the side setback matching the existing building, which is already over the setback line. The building height is 25 foot 3, so we pulled that model, so I think that's well within the 35-foot restriction. But the building setback is kind of matching up to the existing building, and I think in talking to Lynn, we're going to have to go through the BZA process on that item.
All right, that's correct. Thank you. Lynn, a few questions for you before we go down the list line here. Have we found any documentation regarding the existing building and the idea that it was a variance was approved for that at some point?
I have not.
So, at some point, that building was done when we got sure how or why it was put there, but they definitely have a variance from way back, well, they have a non-conforming building from way back.
It almost looks like the lot was created after the building was there to me.
It is the same owner for both adjacent lots, so it may have been.
May have been, okay. Yeah, we're definitely was going to need to go in front of the BZA in order to get the variance approval for the addition, to see if they'll let it line up or required to line up with the required side yard setback. Lynn, I see under landscaping, it says if it's a substantial expansion, landscaping is required, but then we're saying no additional landscaping is being shown. What makes this not substantial is the size relative to the existing building?
It's really the parking area. So, if the parking area was made to be larger, then it would trigger that parking area landscaping. And because this is at the rear of the building, there's just not sort of a foundation planting or site planting requirement that would kick in.
All right, that makes sense. What about stormwater management? I'm assuming because it's hard surface being replaced by hard surface that there's no additional.
You figured it out, yes.
After I looked again.
Yeah, that's why.
On the new site drawing that was submitted, the striped area for the parking layout on the piece that's behind Man of Choice cigars, it looks like there's more paving than there actually is shown striped.
That's correct. So, with the building access, there's a large door on that. It would be the east side of the new addition, and that's where they pull larger vehicles into this new storage shop area, and they want to keep that lane open on the parking area in order to pull the vehicles in and out of the new addition.
They'll be on the north side of the addition.
It's the north side of the addition to the east.
Gotcha, okay.
So, that's why they only had the two lanes there.
And there was a comment about trash enclosure, or trash dumpster. Is there a dumpster somewhere happening, and is there an enclosure?
So, there is an existing dumpster. They just put it to the north lot for now, and we didn't show anything additional or new for the dumpster. That's kind of up to what you want us to do.
Yeah, I think that we're going to need a dumpster enclosure there, so you'll need to have to add that to the site drawing and let us know the material and the height, make sure it's gated.
Is fencing wood or wood fencing acceptable?
Board on, is this district, is that?
The wood is acceptable.
Board on board, so it's solid.
Gotcha.
All right. David?
No questions.
Steve?
I'm not a huge fan of off-site off-street parking or state off-site parking, or direction moving parking spaces to adjacent property. Particularly in this case, I think there's a workaround to it. So, the adjacent parcel, 6409201, kind of wraps around the back of 6409202, works on security and soundings. And I would rather see a lot split consolidation instead of that property of 6409202 further back, put the way of parking behind the addition. Understanding that these are two separate parcels and are not combined, which I think the other option would be providing a plaza. And at this point, they're owned by the same property owner. So, although you're here on the apps, Summit Sound and Security, ultimately, they don't own the property here. So, I'm looking at the future. If your client moves out and something else wants to go in there and needs additional parking, then we're going to be back to another variance. And I just think it's a variance that could lead to issues down the road.
So, there is a current easement for parking for the adjacent plaza for 19 spaces?
Yes, everything's the same.
Correct.
And then you're looking at adding an additional easement for off-site parking?
No.
No.
No, we were not.
No.
Because we still conform to the amount of spaces required with the existing easement.
So, that was before my time.
Right.
It was looking at the future. And I just look, you know, if the property owner were to sell one or the other sites, then we get into an issue. Okay, that was all for now.
Yeah, I'm assuming the easement would transfer over if that was ever sold, that would obviously still be in.
On the other side, I'm happy to see that there was.
Thank you. Pete?
Yes, I only had one question. It was about parking. How is that shared parking easement thing working out? Do you have any conflict with your neighbor?
Not that we've seen. I mean, it seems there's so many spots in the plaza next door that, you know, there's never been an issue of overcrowding or that they'd never use a space behind the existing plaza, George's Donuts and those restaurants. So, there hasn't been any issues that we've seen. And then Havanna tends to use the north side lot at night, but not during the hours in which Summit Sound is operational.
All right. Thanks, Mike. It's amazing how much parking is actually is behind.
Yeah, there is a lot.
There's a lot.
Craig?
I have no questions.
Lynn? Anything else on this that we should?
No, you've pointed out that there's quite a significant amount of parking behind the strip center. There's a lot.
All right, so we will not be moving on this tonight. We need to go in front of the BZA.
Okay.
To get their, see if they approve the setback, and so then you can come back in front of us if they do and address the trash dumpster and anything else that the BZA may require at that time.
So, we have to go through, after the BZA, we have to come back in front of this board next month?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be correct. Gotcha. And get with you on the BZA?
Yeah, with me, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the preliminary site plan review for the office buildings for Holt Orthodontics on corner of Darrell and Rickner Court. Name and address, please.
Leon Sampat, 22082 Lorraine Road, Verden Park, Ohio, LS Architects, here representing Dr. Holt, Holt Orthodontics, at 9184 Darrell Road. She's currently located in Chicago, Illinois. She's going to be bringing her practice here, so she's looking at purchasing the property. Prior to purchasing the property, we've done some site plan studies and came up with what we presented to you here. Her phase one goal is to get a approximately 3,500 square foot building. Part of that phase one, we will be putting in parking for phase one and phase two, which would be equivalent to 45 parking spaces. We calculated with the two buildings, phase two building at 4,600 square feet, and her phase one building at 3,500, would be required to have 32 spaces. So, I think we meet that requirement. The structure, we're proposing a brick structure. It's going to have white and gray bricks. We are using some accent panels, hardy panel, white and a black panel, and then gun metal, brick metal, and black windows.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Well, Planning Commission doesn't approve the aesthetics of the building. I will say that I like the design and the rendering. It was very nice. That was included in the packet, so thanks for letting us see that. Are you aware of the processes relates to this zoning as far as creating a business area plan that really kind of lays out and dictates setbacks and requirements in working with the city planner in doing so?
Yes, yeah, somewhat. I guess we spoke.
Okay. Yeah, because there's, in developing the business plan, that really will establish a lot of what you can do and whether or not, you know, what's here will work when you come back to us. So, that will be required for review and approval. I noticed on the phase two structure, there's that 10-foot setback off of, I'm not sure if that's side or rear, how we would dictate that. I thought that might be kind of close as far as what might potentially happen on the adjoining lot, so I would maybe just say, take a look at that for consideration. I'm concerned about the two parking spots either side of the entrance drive and its proximity to Darrell Road. It's a handicap on the phase one, well, I guess it's both phase one. It's a handicap parking up against the phase one structure and a regular parking spot up against the phase two structure. Cars backing out of there could be an issue as people turning in off Darrell Road, and since you have excess parking.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem.
You may want to look at deleting those two spaces. Obviously, landscape plan will be needed going forward. There's a lot of things still to be worked out, stormwater management, environmental. I know those will all be part of the final.
Correct. We're looking at more likely going underground for retention.
Is the applicant aware of the associated costs and maintenance with an underground?
They are.
Okay. Yeah, from Chicago, maybe they have it now, who knows? Do we have any ideas of anybody who's interested in the one, the two and three structure, or is it just?
It's purely speculative at this point. Her building is her main focus. She wants to get here, start her practice, and then potentially do buildings two and three, but she wanted to at least have us look at that and get her understanding, is it going to fit, would something like this fit on the property?
Gotcha, all right. David? Any, David Kaye? Any questions?
We're going to work when this plan goes forward on restructuring the light signal. It's very, very slow when you're coming on Rickner. I'm assuming someone's looking into that, doing a traffic study, because it's trying to turn left at that light. I haven't done it in a while.
It's terrible.
You might as well just put in for your AARP card. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Steve?
You touched on the one, potential retention. I'm not a big fan of underground because it's hidden. Somebody will see it, but we should put in inspection requirements. The city will be definitely forcing this. My biggest concern with this site is everything relates to this site. We had the rains last week. There was actually pounding on this site between all the impervious parking areas and rebuilding roof space. But Lynn, I read your plan and report, everything seems to be in compliance as far as setbacks and whatnot, but we're putting impervious surface over probably 85% of that site, which already holds and retains water.
Yeah.
So, retention and retention is going to be really critical. Otherwise, your orthodontist is going to be wearing boots. It will flood, I'm telling you about. I just hope for this. So, that will address this review forward. My other biggest concern is traffic. And that signal needs to be replaced and upgraded. It's terrible. Programming on it is terrible. It's old. It doesn't function properly. Cycle times are different, weekdays versus weekends. The detection, the loop detectors have the timer on working, so if that signal's going to have to be upgraded. The proximity of the drive that is proposed on the drawing to the school drive, Terishner, I know we have a little bit of a traffic plant here. It needs to be expanded. We need to see return lanes. This is a very busy area. That school houses kindergarten and preschool, so we have a kindergarten start times, 9:00 a.m., dismissal's at 3:50. You're talking about an orthodontist's office, and most of those appointments are going to be after school. It's going to be very frustrating for clients to get into the office area. And if you look at preschool, their start time is 9:05 a.m. to 11:35, and PM preschool's 1:15 to 3:45. So, and those are on late 20% of the schedule, so I think at those times. So, not only do we have buses coming out that we can't get in and out because of traffic, and we have buses that'll stop traffic on 91 to let traffic out of Wilcox. They're challenged at the Wilcox site as far as stacking of buses and parents to students pickup. It's a mess. Actually, when I was on school board, we tried long and hard to buy that property to add to the Wilcox school campus and realign the driveway for the school to make it come out on Terishner Court. The owner didn't want to negotiate. He wanted to sell as commercial stuff. It's frustrating. Traffic is going to be the major concern. I'm not sure how we address it. So, that's my big concern. Stormwater, traffic.
Thank you. Pete?
All right, let me understand that you're going to have three phases in three buildings, correct?
Correct. That's the proposed.
Okay, and the first phase is going to be the orthodontics office?
Correct.
And there is no plan for what's going to go into the other two buildings at this time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Craig?
I guess nothing that's probably been brought up already. I guess on the traffic side, you know, what is that, that road north of this area between Auto Parts and their land?
That's.
Rich and Charles. The one that's north of this, that's the entrance into.
To Wilcox School.
Oh, yeah, you don't want to dump onto that.
Yeah, you were thinking, I did, you sure, correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the main thing that I was thinking was the school, the traffic was going to be a major issue during let-out times. That's all I had.
Thank you. David?
I'd like to give the architect this that I gave to you guys.
Sure. There's talk of widening portion of Darrell Road there at Rickner Court.
The city has plans to widen Darrell Road, because we've had the plans for quite some time and haven't actually put the plan into action.
You could enter off of Rich.
But this is from the set of drawings.
Yes.
Yeah, we're looking for maybe four, it's maybe four, four and a half feet of a right away dedication on that side. Okay.
And then.
The other thing is, in addition to the right away expansion, the city would look towards maybe matching the grading plan for this project to the grading plan for the roadway project.
And you guys have drawings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, whenever an engineer is chosen, or if engineer has been chosen.
Yes, we do have an engineer working on.
Speak with the city engineer regarding this roadway plan.
Okay. Yeah, you have the driveway through the middle.
Steve, has someone else on this?
Lynn, can you deal with Amy in engineering? Because I'm not sure the storms are, Darrell Road is sized to accommodate this project.
She, I've talked to her. She, yeah, I have talked to her. She, that didn't seem like a concern. She tends to like the underground stormwater.
Yeah, the water should go someplace.
Yeah.
Well, you can control the flow.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, but if it gets overwhelmed, you know, there's going to be a lot of hydro and everything from that.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you, it's, takes a lot of work.
Can I jump in? Just, this is great that she wants to come into Twinsburg. Are there no other places in the city that might accommodate that kind of office? Not necessarily new development, which?
Yeah, I think the amount of money that they put into this practice is, they're looking at wanting to create their own without, so no, they've looked and they haven't found anything that's suited them.
Thank you.
All right, so there's some things to look at and be addressed and continue to work with Lynn and the city on that, and we'll do that. See you back in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It is 7:25. We will roll into the regular meeting agenda. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes first for the February 28th, 2022 meeting. Are there any comments or corrections regarding those minutes? Seeing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Next would be the minutes from the March 7th, 2022 meeting. Comments or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes will also be accepted as submitted. Second item on the agenda is public participation. If you signed up prior to the meeting, please come forward, your name and address, and what it is that you are going to speak on this evening towards Planning Commission.
Hi again. Dawn Sikowski, 2445 Old Mill Road, Hudson, City of Twinsburg. We're here again. We're looking for some type of feedback from everybody. We all had things to say. We didn't learn a whole lot. Emails were sent to everyone. Not very many responses. We're looking for, where are we at? Again, our doors open. Let's come take a walk. Let's look around. Let's look at the site. Let's look at what's going on. I know everyone here has, most everyone here has something they want to talk about. Kind of felt like we didn't learn anything from where are you guys at? Where are we at? Like, what are we to expect from everyone?
Right now, this is just the opportunity for you to address and make us aware of any of your comments or concerns.
Okay.
Not getting actual responses back.
And when do we start to learn those responses?
The next time on the agenda, there'll be additional conversations regarding the new information that gets submitted from the developer, as well as taking into account the items and things that are addressed by the community last meeting and whatever comes up this year.
And are those things that we will discuss, things that have to be submitted via email or spoken directly to someone or only while we're here? I guess I'm here to learn, like, how do we, how do our voices and our answers to questions get answered?
I believe that would be during discussions on when the project's on the agenda and we're discussing at that time.
Just looking for a little clarity. This is all, this is new to me.
Right, the applicant and the owner are not here this evening because they're not on the agenda.
Gotcha. I understand that. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark?
I don't know if the mic's, it's not counting at all.
Okay.
Maybe just sit, sit there. Come forward, just to, I just know it when I'm talking. I was about to go back. Oh, I'm aware you talk. I know. It sounds like it's not as.
It's not as good.
Amplifying, yeah.
All right. Audiovisual technology.
Just pick it up and down.
So, Lynn Clark, 2485 Old Mill Road, and just wanted to renew our concerns that we've got with compliance with certain of the city's ordinances, and have a particularly keen interest in finding out about the ground and the surface water quantity and quality that everybody's super concerned about, the safety on Old Mill Road. And Don said everything else, and we already heard the response, so.
Six of my neighbors have others. Set forth.
Thank you.
Matthew Epple, 2668 Old Mill Road, Twinsburg Township, Hudson address, Twinsburg City Schools. I think that's about enough. My concerns, I just sent Ms. Muter an email, as well as Mr. Post, Mr. Yates, and Mr. Barr regarding requesting information on the permit for the land clearing. I wanted just to see it with regards to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Permit, the Ohio Division of Wildlife Permit, and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Permits with regards to the endangered species and any other animals and requests that were on there for, just to see the information so we can start lining some stuff up and see what we need to make sure that we're all doing everything the way that we're supposed to be doing it. I just wanted to make it publicly known that I asked for at this meeting. Thank you.
You sent me an email today?
Right now. I just sent it to you as I was.
Okay.
The miracles of modern technology.
I didn't see them.
The miracles of modern technology.
That's right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
We have all that. I can share with you after the meeting if you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come forward?
Karen Labby, Ward's Three, Council. Tomorrow, we have the opportunity to vote on the comprehensive plan, which I know you guys all read because you guys submitted it to us. So, specifically, it says how development may proceed in accordance with and in promotion of the general welfare of the community. So, in preparing for tonight, preparing for tomorrow night in voting for the ordinance, just wanted to remind you, David uses this all the time, I'm new. David's new, so.
I was told I'm not allowed to say it anymore.
Yeah, but I can use it because I've never used it. Just trying to understand everything, and I was encouraged by your questions last time, and I have the confidence that you'll do the right thing. But when I was reading the comprehensive plan yesterday, and I was reading it in detail, not just to browse, so sustainable development is development that meets the needs of the president without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Needs, basic needs, water, safety, preservation of environment, and live in harmonious. So, I think it's very important, as I speak for my ward, a hydrological study be conducted with the findings reviewed before anything is done. Traffic not be on Old Mill at all. And somehow to get rid of some of the light pollution and consider larger trees, not a cement wall, so the specific things that need to be addressed, and that's what I'd like to see to remind you. And we'll be here next time that it's addressed, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Steve Hummel, 2500 Old Mill Road, Hudson, Ohio, 44236. You know, really what I, we're all talking about hydrology here on these other projects that we just heard. Hydrology on this site is like 30-fold of all that put together and the ramifications of it. So, looking at ordinance 1175, I've been diving into it some, and I've been diving into some of the calculations as well, which I haven't been able to get the plan sheets, the two-by-threes, which I need to look at how they're routing hydrographs through this site. But I'm looking at the input to their HydroCAD, and, you know, HydroCAD's HydroCAD. I don't know if they do dynamic routing. I don't know if they do dynamic routing of hydrographs. But it's all about what you input to what you get back out. Garbage in, garbage out. And it's very important for a modeler to know how to model a site. And right now, I have a few questions about how they model that site. Quick little blurb here, real quick. When you have a big impervious area like all them buildings and the pavement, and it's basically close to the outfall where the pond is, and then they're taking and routing upstream flow from Sifron through the site, which is more pasture and wooded, there's a couple parameters there. One is time of concentration, how long it takes to get down to the pond from the forest land. And one is, the other one is the curve number or the debris, what slows up, what all that is. Usually for those areas, it's lower, seventy, seventy-five for this equation. For impervious areas, depending on antecedent conditions, it could be up to ninety-nine. Now, when you start modeling, and if you take that sub watershed and you lump it all together and weight the curve number, average it, and then you average the time of concentrations for those two, and you run that through your program, your peak flow is going to be different than if you were to run the two separate hydrographs and run it through. In other words, you could have all that extra acreage, but because the time of concentration is a lot slower, the hydrograph is going to be attenuated. So I could almost take that parking lot area and forget about that upland flow and plug in the high curve numbers and the high, low time of concentration. And because of the way the equation is, my peak flow could actually be higher from just modeling that and not even putting it in. If you're lumping it together is what I'm saying. So I'm having a hard time right now reviewing this because I don't have everything. But I'm looking at weighted curve numbers and I'm looking at time of concentrations of forty-five minutes to get to the pond for what they're running on that sub watershed. Forty-five minutes to get, no. When it gets on that roof, it's going to be out there, look at the flow rate of a pipe, six feet per second out, maybe two thousand feet, three minutes it's going to be to the pond from the impervious area. That makes a big, big difference in pond design. So, you know, I'd like to see some of that stuff because all that comes into play, you know, all of it. Now, I know the Saltwater Conservation District has looked at sediment load, but we're talking about water quantity here. And a lot of ordinance eleven seventy-five gets into this water quantity about the quantity and quality. You know, we have problems with the oil and the grease and all that, but also the rate of flow. Now, when you take and put one pond in the back, there's like five creeks that come out there. You've got a lot of natural waterways that maybe now the Army Corps doesn't designate them, but your ordinance does. Even before House Bill one seventy-five came through, that was the delay here. They wanted to truncate that main creek that went through. That is not an intermittent creek, that last wetland. They took two bites with the Army Corps to get that revised again. The original plan didn't have it coming to the road. So the second bite, they filled that in. That is a spring-fed wetlands. It's not just intermittency. Right now, I went over to Dawn and Marx yesterday and walked the site with some people. Honestly, I really don't want to get into it, but flow is coming off these sites. They are not intermittent. They're spring-fed sites. Now, we'll stop there. I didn't like how they handled it. I called the Army Corps today. They're going to get an enforcement agent out here to look at this because they took two bites on the apple. So but getting back to that pond in the back corner there. See, we're looking at sub watersheds and we're looking at two creeks that are coming through Dawn and Marx. And they're beautiful and they're perennially flowing. When they leave out of Hutchison's, they're coming across, there's flow coming out. And what they're doing here is they're dumping all the water back to the back corner by the high tension wires. And there's another creek that goes through there. It's like the veins of a tree. So they're adding more flow to the one sub watershed that's going out there, but then they're minimizing it to their creek. So it's going to dry up. That plus the groundwater. So what they're doing is they're not, they're not maintaining that harmony. They're not maintaining the quality and quantity of water in the different subwatersheds because they didn't do a good job designing their site because they wanted to maximize the use. They should have, if they want to retain the flow, they should have been putting in several ponds. And not the two in the front that you saw. Those are bull crap. I don't know what they're even doing with those. That's just nothing. You know, the main one is in the back, but they should have split them in along Hutchison's. They should have put maybe three and attenuated the flow that way. It's all about designing your site and that's why we put ten pounds in a six-pound sack I told you last week. It's not to say you can't do it, but you can't do it if it doesn't follow the ordinance. It's crucial about design. It is very crucial how you make these input values. And it's way in the back there, that pond, nobody will ever see it when it's not retaining flow. It's buried way back there. But in the meantime, they're not going to get the water they need. And the wells aren't going to get the recharge because they're spring-fed coming through there, not just intermittent. So that being said, there are some issues that I really do have from an engineering standpoint on that. And, you know, we talked about endangered species and this, these other issues. I read the CEC report from these people and they talked about the, it was hooded monk shed. It's a, it's a plan, a perennial. And they made the claim that on their site, they didn't have it. They didn't have these things on their site. Of course, okay, they may not, but they're in the area downstream. We get into here, it's much shadier and rock drawn, and that's where they live. They don't live up there, but everything that's getting affected is affected downstream. So when they dry up their area, these plants, and they say in their report, they need that cool shade of these waterfall-type ledges, and that's what they have. And going down toward Kevin, and they're going to dry it up when they truncate all this. I mean, literally, they're truncating it. I mean, the wall is a big, you know, it's a, it's a real reminder, but really, in essence, that's what they're doing with everything and showed out the back. And that is not a harmonious design. Now, that's where I have the problems. And that's where I have the problems when they originally got the permits to do this that they didn't propose this in this, when the Army Corps gave approval, it wasn't for what we're looking at now. So see, these are these little nuances here. So, I mean, I'm still looking at the stormwater. I'm waiting for plans. And, I mean, there's all the things I need to reveal. And if I need a PE, I got a friend in Kentucky that has got a stamp in Ohio. You know, I'm not a PE, but I got a guy who is a really good modeler. You know, University of Kentucky is known for hydrology and sedimentology. And I got him, just the same as what this guy might use that some county engineers, the guy that he's talking about doing the groundwater studies. We're at the same level. He consults for Summa County. He might have helped write their manual, the guy that might be doing some of this work. So if he modeled that and didn't do it properly, he's got the qualification. Some young hydrologists don't know how to model properly. It takes time. It's an art. Anyways, there's a lot of questions still, though, that deserve answers because that's fairly extreme what's going on there. And I guess I'd like to say at the end, what happened in that, if when I was a kid, if I would have done that to that land, my dad would have took the strap to me. And then he would have turned around and made me pay, pay for it. Not that, and I don't remember getting the strap. What I remember is the ethics and morals that my dad taught me about what's right. I mean, it's right to develop and that. I'm not a, like a tree hugger. I love my trees and my conservation easement. But there is a sense about this that's not proper. And I can feel it in my bones. I think everybody else can too. And when you walk back there, I want to cry. Hutchison's got wind-blown trees on his property now because they took all the phalange trees down, the Vanguard trees there when they cleared. And he's got big beech trees down laying because it's taking the wind load now. Those are all things that shouldn't happen. That has definitely affected the value of Hutchison's woodlot there by what they did. And that didn't need to happen because if they would have modeled it properly, it probably couldn't have gotten done like this. And it's sad because that area would take four hundred years to reclaim. There were two hundred and fifty-year-old poplars back there, four and a half foot in breast height and diameter. That's not something that, that is really, to replace that with their carbon capture and all that, you know what it takes? You know what one redwood tree does? Like one of them redwoods out in the out west? The carbon capture on them is like two million trees. It goes exponentially up. That's the importance of understanding this. And I'm just going to let it go with that. And I appreciate you giving me a couple extra moments.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll go on to communications and miscellaneous. David, okay?
Nothing.
Steve?
Yeah, I just want to thank the folks for coming out, staying on top of this process. And I'll thank you for your insight and your diligence. Definitely, you have the right of all these people to the letter of the law and to all the agencies that oversee that project as far as environmental and access. The Sikowskis, I just want to let you know, I saw your email. Fortunately, you sent it to my city work email. IIT policy at the city is very clear. I don't open outside emails from unknown people. So if you want to email me, please contact me. You can give me my personal email. You can email me there, but I just can't open work-related emails at the city. So I appreciate you reaching out. Unfortunately, I couldn't read the email. I had to delete it.
Pete? Okay. This is my last meeting after a zillion years coming to City Hall. The only I really have to say is, it's been fun hanging out with you guys. But in the future, please do something the city's always done. You look at capital improvements, please continue to spend money in your neighborhoods. And always drill down because you have to be aware of the law of unintended consequences. So if you don't want to skim along the surface, please drill down. And I think that's too fine if you don't have to come up here and talk. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Pete. Craig?
No, I would just also like to welcome the participation. You know, I'm an engineer and data in crapping is crap out. I understand that to heart, so. But I'm not an expert in hydraulics. So I assume we will have experts that will provide it, and I'd love your comments on it to hold them true because it's critical. So.
Thank you. David, Pete?
I just wanted to again, thank you for your time to be in here. I know the council will talk about this as well, I'm sure, but voices are heard, you know, every side will do what they have to do. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Pete, thank you for your service to the community and the time you spent, I think it was a billion years. Well, actually, I started in nineteen seventy-six. Not all up here. Forty-six years is time to pass at the time. Well, thank you for that. You're welcome. It's much appreciated.
Yeah. Pete?
Lynn, what, anything generally and what do we have on the horizon?
So it's still up in the air in terms of our next meeting and the agenda item for Old Mill Road. So I guess just watch the city website, go to the Planning Commission tab and look for the agenda. Typically, they're posted no later than the Wednesday before the meeting. So we're tentatively looking at April fourth for a meeting. If that, we don't meet that deadline, then it'll be April eighteenth.
Nineteenth.
Is it the nineteenth?
Well, that, I'm just looking at the schedule.
Okay. You know, I just make up meeting days because I don't have a calendar in front of it. But the fourth, the real.
Oh, wait.
We're penciled in.
Nineteenth is a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, so that means the schedule that was given out would only make sense if I looked at the right ones. I have multiple schedules, so it would be the eighteenth.
Right, okay.
You are correct. I'm sorry.
So check the city website on the Wednesday or, you know, we'll post it by edit business on Wednesday for that Monday meeting.
The April fourth, April fourth, is what you said?
Yes.
That would only be, the only thing that tentative is, is Old Mill.
Correct.
If they were to get everything put together.
Correct.
And submitted on time for everyone to review.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Seeing none, nothing else, eight, seven forty-eight adjournment.